Good evening, good evening, good evening. The time is now six P M. I call the October twentieth, twenty twenty-two meeting with the Board of Education of Harrison School District Two to order. I would like to thank you all for joining us this evening. Members of the public who desire to address the board on any topic related to board work must sign the roster at the back of the room there before six thirty P M. Norma, if you could, please proceed to roll call.
Mrs. English is absent. Ms. Frazier?
Here.
Mrs. Salazar?
Here.
Mr. Williams?
Here.
Mrs. Wills Hill?
Here.
Uh, Ms. Ali?
Here.
Ms. Dionisio?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Norma. We'll proceed with item two point two, our pledge of allegiance and reading of our mission statement. Joining us this evening is some of our lovely students from Centennial Elementary School, and we have with us Ms. Emmy Calaway, Eli Calaway, Phelan Rhodes, DeAndre LaGrone, Casey Guidry, Shamar Hardy, Kayla Diaz, and Jewel Alexander. Shamar, why don't you come right here so they can see you?
You guys are awesome.
Okay, come on.
My name is Casey, and we are from Centennial Elementary, and we would like to do the pledge. Put your right hand over your heart, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic where our shit stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and liberty and justice for all.
We are excited to read the District Two mission statement. Begin. Graduate college and career-ready students with the knowledge, skills, attitudes, and behavior to personally succeed and contribute to the common good.
Very nice, very nice. Always nice to hear from Centennial. Uh, we do have a few bags, uh, for all of the students. Uh, so, uh, Ms. Noiz, if you would like to come up and get these, you could pass these out for us. Oh, we're gonna get up there with them. Well, come on up here, we're gonna get some pictures.
These can go for anything you want them to be for, and they have the new Harrison local ones.
These are gonna be for trips.
Uh, yeah, it's a great trip that, I have to reorder a great bag for you.
For your books or for gymnastics.
How do you open this thing?
You guys get in tight.
Let's hear it, Centennial, what do you say?
Great job.
You did?
All right, moving right along to item number three to adopt our agenda.
Has everyone had a chance to review that agenda?
Yes.
All right, now we just need a motion.
Mister Chair, I move to approve the agenda for October twentieth, two thousand twenty-two. As stated. As needed. Stated.
And I would need that second?
I second.
I second.
Motion by Ms. Frazier, second by Mrs. Wills Hill, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Have ourselves a meeting. Item number four, showcasing our schools. Uh, we'll be hearing w- once more from our lovely folks over at Centennial Elementary School. Uh, we have with us this evening Principal Kim Noiz and Assistant Principal Kelly Lay.
At this time, we're all community partners that are here to help support Centennial Stand On Your Right. Thank you so much. Good evening, Board President Williams, distinguished members of the board, Dr. Burr Hansel, executive team, student interns, fellow administrators, and Centennial students and families. We are so excited to be here this evening. I am Kim Noiz, proud principal at Centennial Elementary here in Harrison, and it is my honor to having served at Centennial for the last eleven years. We have a very fun presentation for you this evening, and I'm going to ask Ms. Phelan to come over to help us get started.
All right, all right.
Mister DeAndre, please come on over too.
Okay, all right, DeAndre.
We are so excited at Centennial for this school year, and we started planning last February for this upcoming school year. And we're very, very excited tonight to have a lot of student leaders, outstanding community partners, parents, students, and of course, our team. Thank you so much for inviting us. This year, our theme for the year is Together We Will Move Mountains, because every single team player at Centennial is important, whether it's our students, our parents, our families, our staff, our community, and everyone at Centennial. So tonight, we are here to talk a little bit about our theme for the year, Together We Will Move Mountains, and we established an acronym, as you'll see, for together, and each one of our community stakeholders or students will be talking about a letter in this acronym. DeAndre, what do you think about this?
I can't, I can't, I can't wait to, uh, I can't wait to tell you about all of the great things about the best school in District Two, Centennial.
And Phelan, is there anything you want to add about our Centennial team?
Yes. We are all one big Centennial team, and everyone is here to help me and love me.
Next up, we have Mister Lay to go to our next slide.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for letting us join you. We're super excited to be here. As Mrs. Noiz said, uh, our theme this year is Together We Will Move Mountains, and I'm excited to have Phelan and Eli with me to share a little bit about the T, the first T in together. T means Team Centennial, and as Kim said, we really are a team, um, together with our students, our staff, our families, and our community, and I think you'll see that tonight. Uh, we just wanted to share a little bit about our demographics. Um, we are right around three hundred forty-five Panthers, um, which came in a little higher than our projection, so we're proud of that this year. Um, but we have just a very diverse student body, and we celebrate and embrace our diversity. You can see our demogra- demographics, um, by race up on the slide there. Um, but beyond our student body, we're proud of our very diverse staff. We have a forty-eight percent minority staff, um, and that includes our paraprofessionals and our certified staff. So we have really worked hard to, um, just bring on a very engaged and supportive staff that really mirrors our student body, and we're proud of that. Additionally, we house three significant support needs classrooms, um, along with three moderate needs special education staff. So that is part of our di- diversity at Centennial, and we are very proud of our, um, special education staff and our significant support needs classrooms. Additionally, we have about twenty-five percent of our student body, which are English language learners or C L D E students, um, along with two C L D E teachers and one C L D E paraprofessional to support. Um, and we're super excited that paraprofessional is actually a Harrison graduate. Um, and we'll talk a little bit more about how we have really brought in people from our community to be part of our staff later on in the presentation. So again, we are very excited and, uh, just celebrate our diversity, and Phelan wants to share a little bit more about that.
Values, how we are all different. Just look at me, I will be one of the first minority females in space.
Yeah. So Phelan just talked a little bit about her aspirations to be one of the first minority females in space. She actually, you might have seen her on Channel Five last week. Um, we had Channel Five come and visit us, and, um, they did a story about a space launch that our fourth graders got to take part in, and Phelan, um, shared with the news reporter how she really aspires to have a career in STEM or in STEAM. So we're very proud of Phelan. So the O in, or excuse me, the O in together stands for One Team at Centennial, and we really do work hard to create a team atmosphere amongst our students, our families, our staff, and our community. Um, one thing that's unique to Centennial, uh, the gentleman on the top right of that slide who was unable to be with us tonight, but his name, um, is Mister Daniel Loa, and he was the first community liaison in the Harrison School District. Um, he's, we started that position last year. Um, it's a Title One funded position, but we really saw a need coming out of the pandemic to really, um, support our families with a variety of resources, and Mister Daniel is bilingual in Spanish, and really, again, um, went to school in Harrison School District Two when he was school age, but really connects with our families and provides a variety of support, and he really exemplifies the all-hands-on-deck approach that we really strive for on a daily basis. And Eli would like to tell you a little bit about Mister Daniel.
Mister Daniel does a great job. Mister Daniel does a great job of helping us and also ensuring we have food and resources that we need.
Very nice.
Thank you so much, Eli. So I would like to invite some of our community partners up to just share about, um, those partnerships we have really worked to create at our school. I would like to invite Ms. Elizabeth Cavato to come up, and she's gonna talk a little bit about some partnerships, specifically one, um, we're very excited to have with the Pike's Peak United Way. So thank you for being here, Elizabeth.
Kelly, you're taller than me, but I'm gonna go up a little bit. Hi, everybody, thank you for having us tonight. Uh, like Kelly said, my name is Elizabeth Cavato. You were very close. Um, and I am with Pike's Peak United Way. We turned a hundred this year, as I'm sure you all have seen, and celebrated a century of collaboration with incredible partners. I'm very honored to get to tell you about, uh, a few of the thirty-four partners that are currently involved with Centennial. Uh, McDivitt Law Firm has been a partner for ten years. They've donated over fifty thousand dollars in supplies in those ten years. They also sponsor the carnival and volunteer at a lot of Centennial events. Lifetime Fitness is one of Centennial's newest partners. Um, they provided significant supply donations and funded a welcome back to school event, and provided a Lifetime Fitness backpack for every student and staff member at Centennial. Solid Rock is one of the amazing church partners. They've helped at over fifteen events, and they often lead the city serve days with 'Cause I Love You at, uh, Centennial. And then Care and Share. Care and Share supports and supplies the food pantry at Centennial, as well as a weekend backpack food program for students facing food insecurity. And now I get to talk about my favorite, Pike's Peak United Way. Uh, United Way, Pike's Peak United Way, uh, started expanding our partnership with Harrison District Two about a year and a half ago, and I've gotta tell you, you all do partnerships right. Um, we've, we've had lots of experience in partnering with different people. Um, through that hundred years, uh, we, we fundraise and provide grants to other nonprofits in town. Currently, we have thirty funded partners. We also, um, have workplace campaigns, so we are in over two hundred different businesses to raise money for nonprofits. What that means for Centennial and the rest of District Two that we're working with is that we can align, um, those community partners and those businesses with the needs that your students are facing. So that could mean that Ms. Noiz tells me, hey, I've got students who need glasses, and we, for whatever reason, cannot get these students and glasses, and we work together to find an appropriate community partner to come in, um, do eye exams and get glasses for those children. Um, that falls under our Colorado Springs Promise Program. Uh, that was started in two thousand sixteen with the goal of increasing graduation rates. As you all know, that's a pretty complex situation, and so we really have worked hard to shift, um, our work that we're doing to make sure that it aligns with the current needs of the students and families and schools. Um, we do things, I'm not gonna steal too much of my colleague Heather's thunder because she's gonna talk a lot about this, um, but we do things like family dinners. We had one last night at Centennial Food Distributions, had one of those today at Sierra. Um, we also have two life coaches that we fund. They are actually Catholic Charities employees that work closely with us in our Colorado Springs Promise Program. They are embedded in Centennial and Sierra, and they work with housing insecure students and their families to identify goals, uh, align resources, and really help them gain stability. Um, we also have our two-one-one department. If you have ever heard of two-one-one, it is a multilingual, confidential, free referral network with access to over twenty-four hundred resources. So anyone can call two-one-one with their, they need help with utilities, or they need to find out where a vaccine is, or maybe they need a domestic violence resource, and they will talk to an actual human being, um, who can help them work through their situation and find the best resource for them at the time. So it's a great, um, thing for us to be able to bring to the schools and the families. Um, and last, I'll just open this up, and I'm sure Heather will talk about it. We're very, very excited about opening our Family Success Center. Um, we know that we could not do that without amazing partnerships, and being able to work so closely with Centennial and Sierra has been such a blessing to us, and we are very, very thankful for this partnership. That falls under our Colorado Springs Promise Program. That was started in 2016 with the goal of increasing graduation rates. As you all know, that's a pretty complex situation. And so we really have worked hard to shift our work that we're doing to make sure that it aligns with the current needs of the students and families and schools. We do things, I'm not going to steal too much of my colleague Heather's thunder, because she's going to talk a lot about this, but we do things like family dinners. We had one last night at Centennial Food Distribution. Had one of those today at Sierra. We also have two life coaches that we fund. They are actually Catholic Charities employees that work closely with us in our Colorado Springs Promise Program. They are embedded in Centennial and Sierra, and they work with housing insecure students and their families to identify goals, align resources, and really help them gain stability. We also have our 211 Department. If you have ever heard of 211, it is a multilingual confidential free referral network with access to over 2,400 resources. So anyone can call 211 with their, they need help with utilities, or they need to find out where a vaccine is, or maybe they need a domestic violence resource, and they will talk to an actual human being who can help them work through their situation and find the best resource for them at the time. So it's a great thing for us to be able to bring to the schools and the families. And last, I'll just open this up, and I'm sure Heather will talk about it. We're very, very excited about opening our Family Success Center. We know that we could not do that without amazing partnerships, and being able to work so closely with Centennial and Sierra has been such a blessing to us, and we are very, very thankful for this partnership.
Very nice. Thank you to Elizabeth. I want to invite some other very important partners of ours from Deerfield Hills up to speak a little bit more about a few other of our partnerships. So I'd like to welcome Annie and her friends to speak about these next few partnerships.
Hello. Just a quick little introduction. I work through the Deerfield Community Center Partnership. I am one of the team leads at the before and after school program. During program, what we love to do is focus on teaching lessons through games and activities to strengthen the kids' skills, whether that be socially or independently. I have worked at the school for about two years now, and since the first day that I've worked there, I have felt welcomed. Centennial is never shy from showing their generosity and their gratitude, and I'm very thankful to be honored to introduce a couple more partnerships, starting with the Catholic Charities that... I'm sorry, can we switch this slide real quick? No, you got that covered. I have it here in front of me, so I can go ahead and start. So first is the Catholic Charities that actually houses a life coach at Centennial to help establish resources and setting goals for the school, and also finding employment for people who do not have a job. Centennial is grateful to work with them, and they are very vital to the team. Next, we have the Springs First Ministry, Spanish Ministry, that has been working with Centennial for over two years, for the past two years. They help with teacher appreciation and making sure that teachers get the appreciation that they deserve and the recognition they deserve. They also help with connecting families to holiday meals and help with volunteer events. Next, I would like to talk about the Street Soldiers Motor Club. That is the longest partnership to work with Centennial, being 12 years. And they host school drives, food drives, and supply drives during school and the start of school to help with people in need, and they also help with Thanksgiving feast at Centennial.
Hi there. And then another community partner that we wanted to talk about is COS I Love You. They have a longstanding relationship with Centennial Elementary of eight years. They help to organize volunteer events during City Serve, which encourages communities to serve and to be served. They have helped connect other community partners to Centennial, like Solid Rock and Springs First Church. And so we also wanted to take a second to just talk about Deerfield Hills Community Center specifically. Not only do we do before and after school care through Harrison School District Two, but we provide programs from all ages to the littles, all the way up to seniors. We are a community hub for the southeast, collaborate with many community partners, just like Centennial. We also do a monthly food pantry that has served, just this year, over 100,000 pounds of food to our families. And since the pandemic, it has been over 300,000 pounds of food. So very cool. And not only is Centennial one of our before and after school sites, we serve another five through the Colorado Springs Community Centers. It is a free before and after school care, and we have served well over 500-plus students and their families through this amazing opportunity.
I am so glad District Two has a way for our Centennial Panthers to be safe before and after school at Centennial. I love, I love being a part of Deerfield Daycare. I love Deerfield Daycare. It has fun and amazing things and amazing teachers.
Very nice.
Next up, I would like to invite one of our students, Shamar Hardy and his father, Deacon Hardy, to come on up and talk a little bit about everyone feeling valued at Centennial.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
So my name is, as she said, Deacon Les Hardy, and I am joined tonight by my wife, Maria, my son, Marquis, who is a sophomore at Sierra, and you've met little Shamar, the star of the show. That is his picture up there with the little pumpkin with the mask on. That's him right there. So I have a sophomore at Sierra, first grader at Centennial. I do have a personal interest in D2. Not only have I been a parent representative on the DAT Committee for at least 10 years now, I have been close friends with Mrs. Noyes and Mr. Lane. I call him Coach Lane. That's how long I've known him. He was a coach at Centennial when I first met him. I'm good friends with Dr. Burr Hansel also, so she knows me very well. So friends with Ms. Mary in the front office, the librarian, Ms. Sharon. My son, Marquis, completed his education from K5, K-25 at Centennial. Then he went to Panorama from 6 to 8, and now he's a sophomore at Sierra. He's taken AP courses, Advanced Academic Achievement AAA at Pikes Peak College, as well as enrolled in the Dakota Promise. So I'm very proud of him. He's been through this program, so this is my second time around at Centennial. Principal Noyes claimed Shamar as a Centennial student at the age of three. I mean, she's been with him that long, and she said, Shamar, you're definitely coming to Centennial. We had no choice. Shamar had some challenges, which made me kind of hesitant to enroll him into kindergarten. But Kim and Kelly reassured me that his special needs would be handled, and they have been met. We thank them so much for that. They insisted that he started on time, so we agreed, and I couldn't be more proud of him and his success at Centennial. So like I said before, I have a personal interest at Centennial. They are my family. In 2016, I was diagnosed with congestive heart failure. I was put on a transplant list. I developed kidney failure while I was on that list also. I did receive a heart and a kidney transplant in 2018. The whole time I was down, I received home visits and food deliveries to my family, phone calls, even a family visit from Kelly, his father, and his mother, and they brought me the best barbecue ribs I ever had in my life. I mean, I was surprised. They traveled from, where are your family? Iowa. That's what I call family. That's what I call support. And the staff at D2, like I said, they're family. If I look on that part where it says a place people want to be, check that. Diversity is a strength, check that. Warm and inviting, double check that. All hands on deck, triple check that also. Community is worthy of this investment, check that. So that's where I stand as far as D2. Like I said, they are a family. They've treated me like family, and I wouldn't trade them for anything in the world. Thank you.
Thank you, Deacon Hardy. I want to invite one of our wonderful staff members, Mr. Gearhart, Mr. Zachary Gearhart. He's going to share a little bit about current data at our school in the last few years. So thank you, Mr. Gearhart, for joining us. He is one of our first grade teachers.
Thank you, Mr. Lane. So here's our last few years of CMAS data. There is a large even fifth grade ELA. With that being said, a lot of, we have a lot of work, sorry. Our building is very committed on the focus of reading and math. All right, here's our recent data in CMAS. We are excited about the ELA growth and the remaining, or math remaining above 50. Next, I would like to share some highlights. So, sorry. So in 2022, Colorado Department of Education, School Performance Framework, Rating of Performance. Next is our Access MGP, which is the Median Growth Performance. It was at 71. We made above-average progress school-wide on Colorado Department of Education Early Literacy Growth Tool in 2022. We reduced out-of-school suspension by 90% since 2018.
Thank you, Mr. Gearhart, and also Mr. Hardy. Can't wait to tell you thank you. We are very, very excited to welcome Heather Steinman from United Way Up to talk a little bit about how Centennial is a hub for resources in our community.
We're not going to do a dance. Hi, everyone. Heather Steinman. I am a COO of Pikes Peak United Way. I am Dewana tonight. She's supposed to be here. She had a root canal and didn't realize it might be painful. And it is. So I think it might be her, I was like, is that your first root canal you've ever had, Dewana? So she sends her regrets, but I'm happy to step in. We have had a long, long, long relationship with Centennial in many different lives for me even, different jobs even, right, Kim? We've known each other a long time. So just want to talk a little bit about the hub that Centennial is. And as Elizabeth alluded to, it fits perfectly with what we think about United Way as well as a convenor. And so from a Centennial perspective, you know, again, and from D2, you do partnerships right, and Kim does partnerships right, and Kelly does partnerships right. And making sure that their students have everything that they need so that they can focus on the learning part of learning and not all the other things that go along. So things like food pantry that allows students to have access through their Care and Share partnership. Along with the food pantry, we have the food distributions that Elizabeth spoke about, but we also help serve five other schools. So when we have additional food, other people come in, we deliver food to them. When we were doing distributions at Mitchell, we drove food over to Centennial because she had about 20 families that were in need, and the whole school staff would come out and get the milk that busted out of my trunk. And we would set it up. Clothing giveaways, we work very closely with multiple different agencies. Assistance League has been a big help in the clothing industry. Up Together was an organization that wrote grants to assist families with actual bills, where families received, Centennial received around $32,000, and families received around $1,300 each in a time when they really needed rent, utilities, anything else that came up from that. And then from a perspective of what United Way does again, that's my friend back there. She, taxes provided by VIDA. We do a free, we have a volunteer VIDA program that you can call 211, and you get help if you make under $60,000, and you get free taxes done. We have multiple sites, and we do that throughout the year. We just had a VIDA-a-thon because some of the dollars that were ending, the $750, many seniors, some others that don't traditionally do their taxes because they don't need to, we encouraged them. We had a huge, we had 15 volunteers and served about 150 people to be able to get them that $750. That is so helpful. We have family dinners that Elizabeth talked about, that we just had last night, and Myra, our back-to-work coordinator, who works with upskilling and reskilling. We have dollars provided that we help. She had four parents last night that were interested, which means that we can help scholarship them. We have dollars to scholarship them to PPCC certificate programs, anything like that. And then, of course, parenting classes and Operation School Bell. Operation School Bell is Assistance League, again, they work with all schools across El Paso County, and specifically, they work with counselors when a kid needs additional shoes, clothing. A counselor identifies them as could use a little shopping trip. So School Bell has been a great partner, and they are also out partnering at the food distributions as well. So that's been really helpful. But right now, we want to talk about basketball, don't we?
Hi, I'm DeAndre, and I'm going to be talking about basketball. It has been great having basketball at Centennial. We have fun practicing, and I love playing basketball with other D2 teams.
We are grateful. The last thing I'm just going to mention after basketball is the Family Success Center. Again, we couldn't be more thankful for the space, what it will do. As you all know, it is a very interesting time when you're dealing with federal dollars and construction at the same time. So we are in the midst of an environmental assessment, which means we can't touch dirt until the environmental assessment is done because of the federal dollar requirements. We are moving along that path. We're looking more at January, but we did some incredible news. We found out that the $500,000 that we thought were going to have to go to sprinklers, we got grandfathered in. We don't have to spend that on sprinklers. We can spend it on other stuff. Like carpet. I don't know, paint. So we're really excited, but we can't thank you enough that all the partners that are interested in being in there are subject matter experts. We are not doing direct service as United Way. We are just convening a space that makes the most sense for your families and our community to be served as well as possible. So again, I thank you all.
Thank you, Ms. Steinman. We're super excited to have the Family Success Center just down the road at Pikes Peak Elementary. One thing not embedded in the presentation, but we've been very happy to take in several students from the Pikes Peak Elementary after it was being repurposed, and they are just joining our team at Centennial, and we're happy to have them. So we're moving through the Together acronym. And finally, our E stands for Every Child Every Day. And I just want to share a little bit about what that means. Specifically, we have a portion of our master schedule each day called Win Time, and Win Time is what I need. So we analyze individualized student reading data through Acadiants, formerly known as DIBELS, and students are placed into small groups of anywhere between about six to 10 students. And a paraprofessional or a certified teacher provides small group reading instruction, really focused in on the skill deficiency we have identified in the students' reading data. And in a little bit, Jewel and Casey are going to tell you a little bit more about Win Time. Additionally, we have Title I paraprofessionals and an interventionist and a literacy coach who flood into classrooms during small group time. We also provide, again, small group instruction. We, the last two school years, have utilized a program called ECRI, which has really helped us reach that above-average progress on the literacy tool that Mr. Gearhart spoke about earlier. Additionally, we utilize MTSS, or multi-tiered systems of support, to provide specialized, differentiated, individualized supports to students in literacy, math, and behavior supports. And as everyone has said, we just really create an inclusive environment to support students. Finally, I just want to talk about some of our before and after school. Besides Deerfield Hills, we offer tutoring in the areas of reading and math. We have extended learning opportunities. Specifically, we have a STEM or STEAM club and a Lego club that will be competing at a competition here in the next couple of weeks. They're very excited about that. DeAndre told you about basketball club, and I just want to say, Otero, you're going down on Saturday. But anyway, we are very excited to have basketball. I just came from practice before this, and the team is just having a great time with that. We appreciate the Hillside Community Center and the district just coming together. I think it just creates friendly and fun competition amongst the elementary schools and just gets kids access to organized athletics that they might not otherwise have an opportunity to do. So that's been just a wonderful opportunity. Students received jerseys with our school logo and actually some really nice basketball shoes last weekend. So they were very excited to receive that, and it's been fun playing at the new Carmel Gym. So again, I have Jewel and Casey, who are going to kind of circle back and tell you a little bit more about Win Time.
My Win Time group helps me get the focus skills I need in a small group. I love reading because of this, and this helps me learn new words and learn new books.
All right. Thank you, Jewel. And Casey would like to tell you about his Win Group.
My Win Group, we read lots of books. I meet my reading goals because of my Win Group.
Thank you so much, Casey. So next, I want to invite up Ms. Carla Gidry, who's actually Casey's mother. And Carla is our newest teacher. She started as a support personnel staff member at the beginning of the school year. And she'll tell you a little bit more, but they just relocated from Germany and we're super excited to have them here. But Carla is going to tell you just a little bit more about how we are really invested in our staff. And also, Mr. Hardy is going to close out with a couple more remarks. So come on up, Ms. Gidry. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lane. Good afternoon, board member. I'm sorry, good evening, board members. It's been a long day. All right, I'm Carla Gidry. I am a first-year teacher at Centennial. As Mr. Lane just stated, my family and I just recently moved here from Germany. We have been in Colorado Springs now for three months now. So we are still adjusting to the high altitude.
Still heating, yeah.
Yes. We're still adjusting. So I'm so thankful that my principals thought enough of me to, first of all, be here and to further my education through the BOSI's program. I... Oh, my gosh, okay. I started... I'm sorry. I started as an instructional paraprofessional in August. And my principals thought enough of me to better my education by suggesting that I do the BOSI's program. And I am so thankful that you guys suggested that I do that. So happy for that. I've... This is my sixth-week teaching kindergarten. So I'm still adjusting to everything and all the different acronyms. As a military family, we have our acronyms of our own and now I have to learn the educational acronyms. But I'm so thankful to be a part of the Centennial family. And I look forward to bettering the youth of this community. Thank you.
Once again, you have me. If I wasn't working full-time in ministry, I would probably be working over at Centennial doing something. So really invested. I'm looking at the graphics here and we have ten D2 graduates that work at CES. Many of the Centennial staff live within the boundaries of D2 and partnership with many high schools. So as a parent, my job is to put my student in the best possible position to succeed. Not to feed him a dream that might potentially put him behind the eight ball when it comes to four to six years of college, student loan debt, and things of that nature. So I advocate trade schools. I advocate as a minority, he needs to have a skilled trade that is in demand right now so he can earn an income that will be economically sufficient for himself. Now, don't get me wrong, I am a college graduate. I graduated from the HBCU. My wife is a graduate also. And after graduation, I decided to go to grad school. But I had to secure some student loans. See, when I went to undergrad, I was an athlete, so I got a free ride. But then, when I went to graduate school, I had to get some financial aid. And I found that life started happening and I decided to go into the workforce. I worked in the hotel industry for a while and then I went into law enforcement. But I found out that I wasted maybe four to six years because I received a degree that I didn't even work in. And so now, I believe in keeping it real in this day and time with the students. I encouraged my son, who is enrolled in Pike's Peak already. He took me on a tour last week to Pike's Peak and they walked around and that's a pretty big campus. I got to work out. But I learned a lot that the opportunities that he will have at Pike's Peak for a two-year skilled trade. And I was looking at the mission statement and I found some similarities in here where it says, "Career-ready, Skills to Succeed." And that's what I highlighted for him. Two years, he can be career-ready with skills to succeed. Don't get me wrong, if he does get a scholarship at a four-year university, I would definitely support that also. But I do believe in keeping it real at this day and time. So I am thankful for this opportunity to speak before you today. Like I said, I have one that's in high school. Little man over there is in first grade. So I'm going to be plenty busy for the rest of... for a long time to come here. Thank you so much.
Yes, sir.
So at this time, we just want to say thank you so much for letting us come up. And we have one final theme. Our students want to end our presentation with kind of revisiting our theme for the end. And we turn it over to Casey to get us started.
At Centennial,
Together we care.
All mountains!
Do you have any questions for Centennial?
I believe you answered every question that could be asked. Whether the parents are getting the support they need or the teachers and paraprofessionals getting the support they need from their admin teams, all those questions have been asked... answered, I'm sorry. I want to give a special thanks to all of our partners that joined us this evening. Ms. Cavedo, Ms. Steinman over at United Way, our Deerfield family, Mr. Gerhart, Deacon Hardy, Ms. Gevery. I think I do need to put that Otero versus Centennial basketball game on my calendar. A special thanks to the students who came out. Ms. Emmy, Eli, Phalen, DeAndre, Casey, Shamar, Kayla, and Jewel. You all are outstanding students. You did a remarkable job. Great Panthers.
Thank you so much. They represented well and we hope you have a great night.
Say thank you.
Thank you, Panthers!
If any of my fellow board members have anything to add?
I do. I just want to say thank you, Principal Noyes, for all of the great work that you're doing. We met several years ago and I have seen just so much community support for the students and the families. And I know personally your dedication. So a big thank you.
Principal Noyes, I just wanted to ask you, how long have you been at Centennial now?
So this is my ninth year at Centennial as principal and my twelfth year as an administrator at Centennial.
Well, a lot has been accomplished in your tenure. You have covered all the bases. And at the same time, our kids are succeeding under your leadership. Thank you.
Thank you so much. It is my honor and I have a really outstanding team. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I've been told that we did not have anyone sign up for public comment. So we will move along to our principal appreciation. A great principal builds character, inspires dreams, encourages creativity, builds confidence, instills a lot of learning, touches our hearts and changes our lives forever. We just witnessed some of that from Centennial. In our district, we have nineteen dedicated principals, thirty-three assistant principals, and three deans. The Board of Education would like to show our appreciation with the gift of all the principals, especially those in attendance tonight. So if you would please join us when your name is called. Principals and assistant principals and deans not here tonight will receive their gifts at their schools. And thank you for all that you do. They don't set me up. They put a hammock. Ms. Gallegos? You'd think I'd have that right from graduation, you know, Hannah. Ms. Valdez? Oh, I'm so sorry. Ms. Moore? Ms. Darbo? And you got your green on too? Ms. Irvin? Mr. Lane? And he stepped out. Taking care of the students right now. Coach Dunn is not with us. Ms. Jensen? I'm sorry, Ms. Tuntson. It's like, wait a minute, I don't know a Jensen. That's not right. Did I create a principal? Ask first. Who wrote these? Who wrote these? Thank you, Ms. Tuntson. Dr. Manette?
Canet.
Canet? Man, they're killing me with it. It's me. It's not them. Thank you, Dr. White. Dr. Clayton? And Ms. Noyes? Oh, oh, you're not out there. There you are. Ms. Bonnie?
Bo'nein.
Bo'nein? That's not me. That's not me. Ms. Nun?
Okay, we need the board to...
Slag you all this way? We're enlightened and celebrating our principals. We had one of our principals that could not join us today. They're taking care of a vigil that's going on over at Harrison this evening. If our student board members would like to say what a good principal looks like to them, they're some of our most successful students to grace our board and this dais. So if you guys have a few words about what a great principal is to you, that would be great to share with the public.
So I go to Harrison and specifically, my principal to me has always been really communicating. I can always communicate with him whenever I need something or whenever the school has an issue or we just need to communicate in general about how to better our school. And so I think communication is really just key and a huge part of having a good principal.
Very nice.
Okay, I go to Sierra High School and my principal is Ms. Irvin. And it's funny because I was just like in her office for two periods today.
For good reasons, yes.
Yes. Discussing like board matters and like my future. So it's really like easy to just come up to her and talk about my future, what I'm going to do after college and to kind of calm down the anxiety. And since she's been at Sierra for so long, like in different job positions, she has like a lot of ideas. So like with student council, she's very helpful with giving us ideas and just wanting more school spirit. And I really appreciate that, especially with all of our principals because it's something to keep the traditions alive within school because school should be more than just going to classes and doing work. Very appreciated.
Go ahead, yeah?
I want to give an additional shout-out to Principal Noyes. So not many people realize that we hosted an educator from South Africa at the end of August. And you want to talk about being inclusive and inviting and welcoming. That doesn't just extend to Colorado Springs, but that's across the world in South Africa. And it just speaks volumes of the level of care of children, no matter if they're in your house or they belong to someone else's house. And this just is a great example of all the principals here in Harrison School District Two and why I love serving on the board, as others will attest to that. So again, congratulations and Happy Principal Appreciation Week. So again, congratulations and happy Principal Appreciation Week.
I'll move right along to item five point three. Our Equity Council update by our very own Dr. Mike Claudio, Assistant Superintendent of Personnel and Support.
Mr. President, Members of the Board, Dr. Burrhantel. I'm gonna go a little off script here because the PowerPoint is really focusing on equity work on what we're doing with our students and our staff. But at the end of the day, I've gotta give kudos to Principal Noyes and Dr. Burrhantel for a couple of reasons. You saw Ms. Gidry, she uh, was a paraprofessional at uh, Centennial Elementary. We spoke with her after she talked about some interest in becoming a teacher. And so we brought her on and she's participating in our staff to teach a career path through Pike's Peak Voces where we are picking up the entire tab for her to get her license as a teacher. But that's just one, right? So kudos. But she also provided another paraprofessional who's now working as a sped teacher over at Carmel Community School who we again are paying for the alternative license. That alternative license piece costs about $6,000. And we heard Mr. Pastor talk about student debt. And we know that our children of color, students of color, carry a lot of student um, debt. And through the program that Dr. Burrhantel has allowed, which is the Staff to Teacher Program, anyone going through that alternative licensure program, we pick up the tab. So there are no additional debt that they have to incur to become a teacher in our school district. So thank you both. Equity work, it's been fantastic so far. We've been able to do a lot of things and partner with a lot of different organizations. And so what I'd like to share with you, you've heard me and I sound like a broken record regarding our family assistance program, but that is huge. That allows our families to be able to reach out to our hotline and get support throughout the Colorado Springs area. Community revolutions, that's Mr. Charles Dixon over at Panorama Middle School. He has helped reduce um, suspensions, expulsions, classroom referrals. And we have branched out to Fox Meadow Middle School with Mr. Corey Edward. We have our student success centers located at both of our high schools. We have been able to decrease, uh, decrease suspensions and expulsions. We will continue doing our equity work through literacy and equity. And one of the things, if, if we can, I'll have Ms. Noyes hand out a book to one of our, to each of our board members. We are going to be doing a book study on Robert Jac, Robert Jackson, Becoming the Educator They Need. And out of this book study, the Equity Council will be working with principals to provide some ideas on what equity looks like in becoming the teacher that they need inside their classroom. So what I've done is I've given you a cheat sheet. I know we're all busy. And so you'll see that cheat sheet there, but if you open up to that particular page, one of the things that we're gonna be doing with principals in the October, uh, the November principal meeting is we're gonna be asking them what do these six core values for teaching Black and Latino males look like? The first one is love. Show your students that you love them. Second is trust. Taking your students' word as truth. Fairness, support, accountability and safety. And their activity that they're gonna be working on is making sure that that looks like what that looks like in their schools. And then they're gonna have, extend that to their teachers. So give teachers an opportunity to look at, what does it look like to have these six core values for our Black and Latino students? So that way they know that they're coming to a place where they're loved and they can learn. So that's just one of the things that the Equity Council is gonna be working on. We're also gonna be focused on instruction and we're gonna be looking at three standards in the Colorado Teacher Evaluation Standard. It's, that's two B, two C, and that's specifically working on diversity. And then three A, focusing on making sure that all students, regardless of their academic level, are learning at every opportunity that they can. And finally, the last piece that the Equity Council is gonna be working on is having students tell their stories. We've got a lot of great kids in our district, yet their stories aren't being told. So we started out with Marissa Reyes. She is a softball player at Sierra High School. She's killing it um, in all the right ways. So soon as Anthony can queue up the video, you'll see what she's been able to do at Sierra High School.
Hi, I'm Marissa Reyes and I'm in tenth grade at Sierra High School. My Harrison District Two experience has been great. I've been in District Two my whole life and I've had amazing teachers and even better friends. And I think District Two is giving me an opportunity to become a better person. Well, me and my family, we're all pretty close. We have a nice bond and we like to travel a lot. And I'd say that my family has been like my biggest supporters. Some strengths that I have is that I think, well softball, I have a really strong passion for softball. And I think that it's giving me like an opportunity to become a leader. And that I feel like I've developed strongly, like mentally and physically. Some opportunities that I've taken advantage of is that I'm taking more challenging classes, just classes I didn't think I would be able to take. And that I'm challenging myself more and just pushing myself more. And that like my teachers, my friends and like the admin have all been super supportive of me. I'm in student council. I try to volunteer as much as I can whenever I get the chance to and like the time to. And then I'm also in AP Computer Science. Um, I started playing when I was super young and uh, my dad, he's always been there for me too. And uh, I started pitching like not even a year ago, well like a little over a year ago. So I've been pitching them all and I had a pitching coach for a little bit, but then she moved. So I've just been working on myself. Um, softball endorsed me by just like learning new things, seeing new places, meeting new people and just becoming a better person, just myself. My plan for whenever I graduate Sierra is to try to make it to college. I would like to attend Oklahoma University. It's a long shot, but I'm just gonna work as hard as I can to try to get there.
So. So again, we're gonna be celebrating our students on a monthly basis and we're gonna continue to get more stories. Christine O'Brien has given me um, two more students to interview. And so we'll be taking care of those and we'll have one in November and December. And then we'll have a whole slew of other students for the second semester to interview as well. Any questions?
I have no questions. Um, it's always nice to hear from you. You wear many hats. People don't know it. That should be your title, Man of Many Hats. Uh, if you don't know, uh, Dr. Claudio is also our liaison to uh, charter schools as well. He works hand in hand with them on top of uh, heading uh, some of human resources as well as he's on our Equity Council, as well as he is the backup for Dr. Burrhantel. It, and when she is our COVID coordinator, can't, can't forget that one.
Yeah.
And raccoon wrangler.
Yeah.
It is serious business and those raccoons mean business. Uh, Dr. Claudio, for all that you do, we thank you so much.
Thank you.
It would seem fitting to uh, add this uh, little bit of information uh, at the end of communicating uh, with the public. Uh, in the past forty-five days, we've had two incidents of suicide. And we would like to let our community know that uh, we are here for you uh, with whatever you need. Uh, hug on our students, let them know that we love them. Um, the national hotline for suicide is uh, nine eight eight. Uh, Sept, uh, September is Suicide Awareness Month. And though it has passed, uh, it is still an issue that is in our forefront. And so we are here for our students. Uh, you can also text GO to seven four one, seven four one. Uh, and so that is information not just for our students, but our adults as well. We will move right along to item number six, Superintendent Consent Agenda. Uh, these items have already uh, been discussed. Uh, and we are just um, giving them the uh, good old Board of Education uh, rubber stamp. Uh, that would be item number six point one, October twenty twenty-two Personnel Reports and Comparison Reports. Item six point two, August twenty twenty-two Financial Statements. And for six point three, I would just need a motion.
Mr. President, I move to approve the Superintendent Consent Agenda Items as stated.
Second?
Motion by Mrs. Wills Hill, second by Ms. Frazier. All those in favor?
Aye.
Items so moved. Right along to item number seven, Board Consent Agenda. And again, these items have been uh, discussed already. Item seven point one, Approval of Minutes Combined Work Session and Board Meeting, September first, two thousand twenty-two. And for item seven point two, I would just need a motion.
It's always a competition, right?
I move to approve the Board Consent Agenda Items as stated.
Second?
Motion by Mrs. Salazar, second by Mrs. Wills Hill. All those in favor?
Aye.
Item so moved. Item number eight, Monitoring Board Performance. I don't believe we have any updates to our annual work plan, although it seems like we've had a second summer vacation uh, because we canceled our trip and then we could not have our board meeting uh, two weeks ago. So uh, I think those were the only major calendar changes that we had. And item eight point two, Legislative Updates. Dr. Burrhantel?
Um, just for some other updates, just on the, it's not on your work plan, but just so you're aware, our Harrison band will be competing at state, which is a huge. Girls softball went to state at Sea, not to state, to playoffs at Sierra. And we're hoping soccer is going to go for both schools actually. Um, is there anything else, Shervin? So. So, we have some great things happening for kids and their athletics. Um, for legislative updates, we are advocating hard um, for education funding that's sufficient for our students. Uh, it will depend on some of the bills that they're projecting. So are they gonna pass the free food for everyone? That's gonna be huge of where the funding's coming from and what's gonna be taken from education funding. And so um, we're just, we're in a waiting session, but we are looking at how to fund at-risk students in an appropriate manner, which is not the one we have now.
And for those of you that don't know, um, free food for everyone would help us out immensely because uh, though some other districts are jumping on the Feed All Students bandwagon, we've been doing that for quite some time and that would free up a lot of extra dollars for us because we're gonna do it regardless. So, uh, but that, that is something that we definitely need booster. Alright, now we'll move right along to item number nine to adjourn and I would just need a motion.
Mr. President, I move to adjourn. Second?
Motion by Ms. Frazier, second by Mrs. Wills Hill. All those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned. Everyone have a safe trip home.
Principals, before you leave, see executive team out in the hallway. You're not in trouble. You get extra gifts.